Regular meeting of the village board to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Cook?
Here.
Markwart?
Here.
Forster?
Here.
Schenk? Takaoka?
Here.
Oppenheim?
Here.
And President Byrne has given prior notice that he would not be in attendance.
Is there a motion to appoint a chairman pro tem for this evening's meeting?
I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be chairman pro tem for the duration of the meeting.
Second that.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Markwart?
Aye.
Forster?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We are called to order. Would everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any citizens wishing to address the board on something other than what is already on our agenda, especially the committee of the whole? All right, hearing none then. First item is village manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two announcements this evening. First and foremost, you may notice a new face up at the dais. I'd like to welcome Andrew Jennings to the staff. As you know, Andrew was appointed at our last board meeting in July. He'll be taking over as the new director of community development upon Mike's retirement in September. So looking forward to having you join the team, Andrew, and welcome aboard. And then second, I just wanted to remind everyone that this coming weekend is the Park District's Rib Fest Festival. It's going to be this Friday, August 19th, and Saturday, August 20th. And as a reminder, this Friday evening is going to be the rescheduled Fourth of July fireworks. So if you're looking forward to seeing that take place coming out to Century Park this Friday evening.
Okay. And it'll be earlier than Fourth of July fireworks because it gets darker earlier, correct?
Probably be closer to nine than 9:30, yes.
Yeah, okay. I want to make sure people know that. Okay, anything else under yours? No? All right, then if nobody else has a speaking part, chief, you wanted to address a couple things?
Thank you. I'm going to join up here so that one of our officers can join us. So for those of you new to the board, you may not recognize Casey Burgsneider. Casey has been a police officer with us for a number of years, but for the last, well, almost a year and a half, has been gone on active military duty. So not being satisfied with being only a police officer for the village of Vernon Hills, Casey is also a member of the U.S. Navy Reserve and a police, military police officer for the Navy, and was called away to active service and spent over a year in North Africa, serving our country. We just got her back after some readjustment time, which a military is really good about these days, and some needed R and R, I think. And she came back last week, and we're really happy to have her back. And I thought it was just a great opportunity to come in front of all of you and welcome Casey back, and we're happy to have her. And I know she's happy to be back, too. Welcome back.
Thank you, sir.
All right? Okay.
I just want to say it's incredible to be home, and I want to thank you all for your support. It's been great returning to work and working with a really good team. I also want to thank you. While we were out there, you guys arranged for care packages, and there was enough for all of our officers. There were so many boxes that we were also able to cover our fire department out there and most of our other first responders, our nurses. It was absolutely amazing and right at Christmas. It was a really good feeling to have that from home, so thank you all.
No, thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, and one other thing, yeah.
I do. Just, I want to call out to the board's attention, there's two items on the omnibus agenda that I think warrant, just a shout out, and certainly if there's other questions, we can go into more detail. But ordinance number 22-090 authorizes the expenditure of drug forfeiture funds for the purchase of safety equipment. These are ballistic helmets and shields used by the police department. Anytime we spend any amount of money, this is less than $10,000, but any expenditure from these drug forfeiture funds, it's our practice to come to the board, make sure that is done completely transparency and in transparency, and those quotes were attached to the board packet. The other item I wanted to call out was the next ordinance, 22-091, is a much larger purchase. It's a six-year contract in the amount of $294,885.31. That's an agreement with Axon. Axon Industries is the supplier of our current body camera system and our current in-car video system. This purchase would basically replace the current agreement we have with them and enable us to upgrade our in-car equipment and importantly, enhance some of the technology we're using. What a lot of people don't understand, the real trick with this technology is not really the equipment itself, it's the backbone, it's the support software, it's the cloud storage. The system they use is called Evidence.com. That has become our one place that we keep all digital evidence now. And the more and more we use it, the more storage we have. So this contract actually covers not just the equipment and the upgraded equipment that we're going to get and expanding in additional cars than we have right now, but also the additional features that we need in that software to use for the next six years. We are asking to waive competitive bidding because this is not something that we think is worthwhile, going out and looking at other vendors. And the big reason is because in Lake County here, almost all the other agencies are using this, and importantly, our local prosecutor and the Lake County State's attorney uses the same technology, the Evidence.com. So it really makes transferring of information for court and prosecution purposes much more effective. I am aware of other communities that have gone out and done competitive pricing. I think that what we are paying is competitive, but I don't think it would be worthwhile for us to go and look and see if we could save a few dollars and then have to figure out how to switch all of our technology to another. I mean, it would be akin to moving from a PC to a Mac if you've never used a Mac, or vice versa. I don't want to upset the Apple people of the world. So with that, I just wanted to call that out, and we certainly could answer any questions, and I would take no objection if someone wanted to remove it from the consent and have further discussion as well.
Okay. Then with that said, then our next item would be the consent agenda, which is items A through H. Does anybody want anything, Paul, or is everybody good with?
I'm fine with where it is.
Okay. All right, then is there a motion to approve items A through H on the omnibus vote agenda?
Motion to approve?
Have a motion, a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Forster?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Aye.
Chairman pro tem, Cook?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, no unfinished additional business, correct? Okay, then under new business and communication.
I'll take it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Petrillo, yeah.
Thank you. Staff would like to take this opportunity to provide the board and community with an update on the village of Vernon Hills Military Honors Banner Program. The board gave direction to staff to begin to promote this program, which will formally commence in 2023. To create awareness of this program, staff worked with members from the American Legion Post 1247, who sought first to honor those in the village currently serving. The Legion identified six residents who recently graduated from Vernon Hills High School and went into the armed forces. As you may recall, during this concept presentation, one of the first persons identified as having served was Sergeant Morgan Renahan. In addition, we'll have POC Daniel Huang, United States Marine Corps. We have Lance Corporal Matt Hart, United States Marine Corps. We have Specialist Brandon Espinosa, United States Army. Looks like he's fitted in his parachute gear there, chief. We have Lance Corporal Gregory Labelle, United States Marine Corps. We have Lance Corporal Stephen Hart, United States Marine Corps. And of those actively serving, the last one we have is Specialist Logan Shu, United States Army. To each of these service members and their great families, we say thank you. In addition, the village of Vernon Hills is proud to honor those who have previously served in the military. And this was the point made by several of the trustees, including Dr. Oppenheim, who wanted us to make sure that we honor properly the 511 veterans that reside here in Vernon Hills. So we will commence with recognizing residents who previously served. First person up, you may recognize former member of the Vernon Hills Police Department is Specialist William, known as Bill Wagner, United States Army. You'll see Bill is still serving in the American Legion and chose to be featured in his Legion uniform. We have Sergeant Todd Renahan, father of Morgan, wearing the old-style MP uniform, looks like from the early 80s there, chief. May recognize this former soldier and former board member, Specialist Six, James E. Schultz, United States Army. And Jim is featured with, it looks like, a globe. Got the world in his hands. The world in his hands. And last but not least, for this initial group, may recognize Major Craig Warner, United States Air Force, climbing in his fighter plane. This initial group of banners will be on display at the muni starting the week of August 22nd and will be up through American Legion's Fourth Annual Heroes Golf Outing, which is scheduled for Saturday, August 27th at 9:00 a.m. The community is welcome to attend. As a reminder, going forward each year, the village will recognize 20 residents who served. For those that desire to be part of this program and would like to be considered for the application process, please visit the village website. The keyword is military banners, and the American Legion will begin to vet those interested. Thank you.
I'm glad that we were able to get this done before that, before the Legion's golf outing. It'll be nice for that to be up when, because I know all four of those guys will be there for at least part of the day, so.
They will, and as I went and traveled to their houses and as we were looking at pictures, trying to decide if we were going to use current pictures or pictures from their glory days, you could see the enthusiasm and the excitement and the appreciation that the village is recognizing them. So on behalf of all the veterans, I know they would like to say thank you. And I can also share Todd Renahan, and the Legion took the lead on trying to identify those currently serving, and we hope we got everybody currently serving. If we missed anybody, please reach out to me. My information's on the village website or go to military banners on the website and reach out to Todd Renahan. We'll be more than happy to make sure that anybody currently serving is considered in that next group of 20. But on behalf of those families, they would also like to say thank you to the board for taking the time to recognize them. A lot of excitement about this program, and I heard it was covered on a couple major news Chicagoland media sources. So a lot of excitement in the Chicagoland community for the way that this community respects and treats its veterans, as we saw here tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Assistant Village Manager Petrillo for taking the bull by the horns and getting this going as well.
Yeah. Yeah, excellent work, John.
Thank you, sir.
Any other new business communication? Anybody have anything? No? Okay. In that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the village board meeting and go to committee of the whole.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Second?
Okay, motion a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the August 16th, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Vernon Hills Village Board. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Markwart?
Here.
Oppenheim?
Here.
Takaoka?
Here.
Cook?
Here.
President Byrne has given prior notice that he would not be in attendance.
Is there a motion to appoint a temporary chair or chairman pro tem for this evening's meeting?
And once again, I'd like to appoint trustee Cook to be chairman pro tem for the duration of the meeting.
I second that.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Forster?
Aye.
Markwart?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Okay, first item of business is the approval of the Committee of the Whole Meeting minutes of July 19th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Motion a second. Any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Markwart?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Epstein.
Chairman pro tem, Cook?
Aye.
Motion carries. Second item is a request for an outdoor seating and seating establishment permit for Feather Glass Wine and Eatery located at 700 North Milwaukee Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can give a brief summary as the owners of the restaurant walk to the lectern. Again, this is a request for an outdoor seating permit. On the screen in front of you, if you look at the lower plan, the highlighted area in orange represents where the fence is and also the perimeter of the outdoor dining area. Also note that some of the land, also note that the door at the top will be the entrance door to the restaurant so that you don't have to walk through the outdoor dining area to get to the restaurant. And then to create a path to get to the new main door to the restaurant, they'll be eliminating some of the landscape island and then also relocating some of the landscape island as shown on the plan in front of you. This gives you an idea of what the, this shows what the seating plan looks like. It would be six tables with seating capacity for 24 customers. Immediately to the south of this is the outdoor seating for Bluefish, so staff thinks this works just fine. The entrance to the store north of this, which is America's Best, is a number of feet north and won't be obstructed at all by the outdoor dining area. It's not a big area, but at least it gives them some outdoor dining area experience for some of their customers. So if the cow determines that this request is appropriate, then staff should be directed to prepare a resolution approving the outdoor dining permit in accordance with the conditions that are outlined in your packet and in accordance with the plans that are being presented to you tonight. If you're interested, this shows the interior plan.
Yeah, the single door at the top is going to be new, correct? Yeah, there's nothing already there, okay.
That is correct.
Are there any comments or questions? No, because I went out and looked at it this afternoon, and it just will basically mirror what's already there for Bluefish, so. It is actually removing some of this landscaping, and that's actually, I think, going to be a good thing for you because that particular frontage doesn't have a lot of visibility because of that one giant column that's right there in front of the door, so.
That is true.
Yeah. Any comments or questions?
Are they sharing a fence with Bluefish? Or what's the distance between their outdoor seating area?
Yes, there will be, the south side of the section would be shared between us and Bluefish.
Yeah, the fence that's already there.
The fence that's already there will be there, okay.
Correct, yep.
No problem, it's okay. Then is there a motion to?
Direct staff to prepare a resolution approving the outdoor dining permit as presented tonight and in accordance with the conditions outlined in your packet.
Exactly what Michael said, so, yes.
Motion, what he said?
Motion to approve.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Aye.
Markwart?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Chairman pro tem, Cook?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so you're all good on both counts tonight?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say a few words?
Yes, please.
Thank you so much. We've been the resident of Vernon Hills for eight, nine years, and we have loved this community, so we're going to be, you know, further investing in here and trying to establish a business. So we really appreciate the opportunity, and, you know, we went through the building commission in terms of permitting, application, everything else, and everybody, all the entire staff, very helpful, so really appreciate everything you have done. And kidding aside, she is my better half, you know? But like I said, this has been her dream, and you guys have making it possible. So really, thank you so much for all your help.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought, I thought that's all. I thought that was all you were going to say when you came up. That's all you.
She knows I'm joking around. She's heard this before.
No, Mr. Brown was correct, that was a great recovery. Okay. Next item is consideration of a report and recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval of site plan, landscape plan, architectural elevations, and certain variations related to the sign code allowing the redevelopment of the former Denny's property located at 890 Milwaukee Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can give a brief presentation of what the project is all about. I think you do remember this from concept presentation, though, and then what the recommendation is from the Planning and Zoning Commission. On the screen in front of you is the site plan. They're proposing two small additions, one on the northeast corner and the other on the southeast corner of the building that'll square up the building. They're also proposing to completely upgrade the site plan, new curb and gutter, complete grind and overlay of the parking surface, upgrade of the walking surfaces. They'll also upgrade the lighting fixtures for the parking lot to LED-type light fixtures. This is the floor plan, and as you can see, about two-thirds of the space to your right, that'll be taken by Wild Fork, which is a niche meat market-type retail use that offers also fish, poultry, other kinds of meat, and side dishes that go with it. Something from staff's perspective will fit in real nice with the redevelopment that's going on in the mall. The space to the left would be Hayday Medical Spa. This plan shows the existing landscaping as it is today. Note that four trees will be removed. All four of those trees were looked at by our landscape technician, and they were determined to be either dead, close to dead, or diseased, so it is appropriate to have them removed. All other trees would remain on the perimeter. The landscaping, obviously, around the foundation would also be removed. And the new landscape plan would look something like this. Note that they're adding new landscape islands on the northeast and southeast corners of the building. They're greatly improving the foundation landscaping as well, and then they're adding trees in place of the ones that they had to remove. And finally, they're providing landscaping around the monument sign along Milwaukee Avenue. This starts looking at the facade. This is the east facade facing Milwaukee Avenue. The Wild Fork facade consists of, well, I should mention, first of all, they're going to remove, thank God, that Mansard roof that's in front of Denny's right now. They will extend the parapet up for the purpose of screening the rooftop equipment, and then they'll introduce new materials just to provide architectural interest. There'll be vertical fiber cement panels. There'll also be horizontal fiber cement panels, ACM panels, those are those square-type panels. And then they'll paint the existing brick as shown on the screen in front of you. Over the main entrances for both Wild Fork and Hayday Spa are metal canopies. Again, the top screen again is the east elevation, the bottom screen is the north elevation. Top screen is the west elevation. Note, too, that canvas awnings are being installed at select locations of three of the facades, generally over the roof and doors. Again, the west elevation. And these are the two signs. The sign to the left is basically repurposing the existing sign at Milwaukee Avenue. The sign to the right would be at the Enchance Drive from Ring Road. So let's get you back to a nicer picture. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing on August 10th to consider the site plan amendments, landscape amendments, and to approve the architectural renovations here. And overall, the commission was very supportive of the site plan and the landscape plan and the architecturals. Their vote was unanimous to recommend approval. The commission members did, however, request some changes to the facade. They wanted the petitioner to bring some of these interesting materials that were on the east facade back around to the other three corners, and they've done that. If you look at the top picture there, you can see the horizontal fiber cement panels for Hayday on the east elevation was carried around the corner to the side, and it does add more architectural interest. If you look at the bottom picture, you see the ACM panels that were on the front elevation have now been incorporated into the north elevation towards the front and the rear corner. The same thing for the west elevation at the top of the screen. And then if you look at the south elevation at the bottom of the screen, you'll see more of the horizontal fiber cement panels. So these renderings before you represent what the commission requested at the time of the public hearing. Regarding the variations, the commission was supportive of all the variations. There were variations relative to number of signs on each facade, the size of the signs, variations for the logo for Wild Fork. They were supportive of all of those except for two, and I'll point those out to you. Number one was the Wild Fork sign shown here on the west elevation at the top of your screen. They felt that that sign was too large, and it should comply with the size requirement of the sign code, which is 26.7 square feet. I will note there were only five people present at the time of the public hearing, so even though there isn't a motion to recommend approval for this Wild Fork sign on the west elevation, that motion failed with three in favor and two against. So they had more yes votes than no votes, but they needed four for the purpose of carrying a positive recommendation to you. And then on the bottom screen, the south elevation, they had originally proposed a Hayday Spa sign there. It needed a variation because it's a facade that doesn't have, that isn't adjacent to frontage. The commission felt there wasn't a need for this sign because the visibility is poor, you really wouldn't be able to see it anyways. So that's the recommendation before you tonight. I'll also note, and the Planning and Zoning Commission doesn't consider this, but the space, this property is located within the core retail district, overlay district, which requires that buildings maintain at least 80% leasable floor area devoted to retail or restaurant spaces. This plan before you is 70.2%. So the board is, in addition to considering the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, is also requested to approve a certificate of building use conversion for this property to allow 70.2% devoted to retail restaurant uses rather than 80% as required by the zoning code. So for tonight, if the committee feels that the redevelopment of this property is appropriate, including the request for a certificate of building use conversion, then staff should be directed to prepare an ordinance approving the development, subject to the plans that are being presented to you tonight, and also in accordance with the conditions that are outlined in your packet. And a representative of the developer is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Hi, I'm Diane Menza. I think I've been before, most of you before. I represent Gateway Nine LLC. And just to amplify a little bit, you know, expand on what Mike talked about with the 70.2 versus the 80. That's because a spa, medical, you know, the facial wellness, those chairs don't count, only their retail counts within their space. So we've done two things, though. We've expanded the building so there's more retail sales. It's about 971 square feet addition to what was there previously with Denny's. They were at 5,671 square feet, and we're now at like 6,600 square feet. So that's like a plus. However, Hayday does have, doesn't meet the sales tax requirement, retail sales tax requirement percentage. So that's just to expand on what Mike said. And I'd be happy, he gave a great explanation. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
I have a question about the sign. So I personally don't see a big deal about having a bigger sign. If the vote was three to two, Mike, you were saying?
Yes, the vote was three to two in favor of the variation for that Wild Fork sign.
What's your thought on the sign? I mean, to me, it's a standalone building. I think a bigger sign would be...
It was puzzling because part of the discussion last week was, you know, to really add to the back of the building.
Right.
So that, you know, we're kind of in unusual situations since we're three sides of exposure, and there's a lot of traffic that will be going on that ring road with all the new construction that's going on and the new... So that was a little puzzling because both Wild Fork and Hayday wanted to, you know, let people know so that, you know, you make the turn in time, or if you're coming the ring road the other way, you'd turn in. So I was a little puzzled about that. They have in their lease that they want it to be this size, just so you know.
I mean, I, can we, I don't know, does it, can we?
Yeah, you can, well, you can overturn the recommendation because it's a variation request. It takes a supermajority. So we'd need five yeses.
You have five total votes, but not tonight. Tonight's just a motion to direct staff to prepare the ordinance.
That's correct.
It will be at the next meeting.
That's correct.
Right. I mean, do you guys see, because I know we've had this discussion about signs before. I know there's an ordinance, but do you see any issue with having a bigger sign?
Well, it's about an 80% increase.
I understand what you're saying.
It's almost double ordinance.
Right, but we can, you know...
Can you go back to the one, which one is it that's too big?
The one on the screen in front of you at the top of the screen.
The top of the screen, right there.
The one right there.
Yeah.
Which doesn't appear to be any, the other ones are allowed to be bigger. Can you go to the other facade for a second?
Sure. This is the front facade. The sign code requires that for each tenant space, the signs can be no larger than one square foot per linear foot of tenant frontage.
Gotcha.
For the secondary frontages, the north elevation and the west elevation, the maximum allowable size can be 50% of the allowable size of the primary signs on the east. So...
So basically, though, that sign, that the other sign is about the same size as one of the other two.
That's correct.
And smaller than the main one.
It's actually smaller than the main one. That's correct. Staff, when staff looks at these signs, we look at it, just if you want to know our perspective, we look at it in relation to where in the facade is the sign going.
Yeah.
And is it dominating that facade, or is it appropriate size given the area of the facade?
Well, that's the other thing.
And we think that is appropriate.
The wall has virtually nothing on it, so it's...
It holds the sign well, we think.
So you think it's...
Yeah, we think it's fine.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
And it's to the, actually, it's to the west.
Yeah.
So it's...
The one on the east side, the main entrance one, is that within code, or is that larger than?
These signs require variation because we have to add up the size of the logo, and we have to draw a box around the outer limits. So, because by definition, that's the way to measure the sign.
Right.
So that ends up being a larger sign. Then we have to add in the Wild Fork sign and all the smaller signs on the metal canopy. So those do require variation as well.
So the wild, the words Wild Fork are larger than what would be within code?
That's correct.
I guess my only dispute would be that the Wild Fork one is, seems to be so much larger than the Hayday sign. It seems a little bit...
Yeah, and the sign code is based on linear footage, and since Wild Fork takes up two-thirds of the linear footage of the frontage, it's, even if it was fully compliant, would be a larger sign than the Hayday sign.
Trustee Markwart.
Just curious, too, the emblem somewhat circle, what does that represent?
It's a flame.
A flame?
And it's, you know, this is a global company. It's owned by the largest food distributor. I think, one of the largest in the world, and they have certain things like their flame. And when they change their, when they change that logo, they'll change it throughout their enterprise. So, yeah, we actually got them to reduce these signs. These are smaller than, I said, you know, we have to have it.
Is that logo within code, though, or is that?
No, it's, the code, because it's a standalone logo, it's limited to just four square feet. If it was adjacent to the other sign, it would be limited based on the size of the individual letter signs. So, yeah, that needs a variation.
Yeah.
And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of it.
They recommend, okay.
You'll notice on that corner how the wall was raised to a higher elevation, not only on this east elevation, but also on the north elevation. It's not only to provide a prominent entrance to Wild Fork, but also to create a large enough area so when the sign's placed on it, it looks appropriate. Again, it doesn't look like it's dominating. So we had them increase the facade area and decrease the size of the logo. So we thought it looked logical, at least.
How does this, how does the Wild Fork verbiage size compare to across the street, you know? You know, people are looking to the right in Melody Farm and to the left at Wild Fork. I'm just curious, does it seem out of place in terms of that, the back of those buildings? They all have...
Yeah, but Dave, Melody Farm, looking at Melody Farm and this little Denny's strip center is like it's standalone, right? You're not, I don't see, are you saying you're confused when you're driving?
No, no, I'm not saying confused. I'm saying, does this, proportionally, does this seem like really out of place? Like a giant sign compared to the ones across the way?
No, it will not seem that way. It will not.
Yeah, it's a standalone building. It's not like there's other contiguous buildings on Melody Farm.
Especially being on the Milwaukee Avenue side.
If anything, you need to be noticed when you're sort of just sitting there.
I get that. I just don't want to create a precedent that every single business is going to have a gargantuan sign that's larger than what's allowed.
It's a case-by-case basis, Dave. Not every sign's going to be, you know, unless they want to, you know...
What was that?
I think we've taken things more lenient from the past to now, and...
Right, just like the fence thing we had a discussion about. So everyone's going to raise the fence to six feet. That kind of doesn't happen. It's sort of appropriate for the business and sort of the location of this establishment. It is a standalone. At Denny's, I see Denny's just, you know, there's nothing else around it.
I don't see a problem.
Yeah. I mean, if anything, you need to draw attention to yourself, especially as a retail business.
Any other comments, questions, anyone?
When you look at, when you look at the north elevation, you see the, where it says Wild Fork there. You're saying that, does that meet the percentage for the non-main?
Now, the sign on the north elevation, again, we add up the area of all the signs like we do on the east. And the area on the north elevation also needs a variation, just like the ones on the, just like the ones on the east. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of those variations.
See, to me, that one looks more appropriate in terms of the, because it's the, from top to bottom, same, same square footage or linear footage. It just seems to fit a little bit better to me, but it's a personal preference.
Right, P and Z approved it, so I think really it's just this sign getting the variation that they didn't pass and building a...
Yeah, to answer your question, they did recommend approving it. It's just this sign at the top of the screen that the motion to approve failed with three in favor and two against. So this is the one that...
Right, this is the one in question.
Same with the new, the new south elevation is the one minus the sign that was there.
Yeah, and the petitioner has chosen to remove that south elevation sign, so they're...
We contacted the tenant and told them, you know, if you want to get passed, we contacted Hayday, you know, you need to agree to remove the sign. They said, okay, because they knew. Also, it's not facing...
Yeah, it's the side that faces the other buildings to the south of it, so...
Where the Wild Fork was so adamant, and that's on the side, because Hayday has the back sign still.
Yeah.
It's on the ring road where they'll get more visibility.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm curious, where did the 80% number come from?
It's the gross leasable sales space. So when we say leasable, bear with me here so I can find the... We subtract the area of the meter room because that's not leasable. They did get credit for a portion in front of the store. There's about 380 square feet in Hayday Spa that's devoted to retail sales. We gave them that credit. Then we did the calculation and came up with the 70.2%.
And I'm just, when the ordinance was first created, I'm curious, was it an arbitrary number, the 80 versus 70? Do you remember how we came up with that, or is that a standard thing for other communities, or?
No, I wouldn't call it standard. The ordinance came out during the time of COVID. We had a number of big box retailers go out of business, and there's a number of non-retail uses, mainly medical offices, that wanted to take that space.
How dare they?
And with retail restaurant being such an important part of our community, we wanted to make sure we protected that and came up with the overlay district amendment to the code.
But we just, I don't remember. We came, just came up with the number 80. There was no, no magic to that.
There was no magic to that, that's correct.
We could have just as easily said, let's make it 70 instead of 80.
Yes, sir.
I could have made it 100.
100, that's possible.
We could have done that if we wanted, but, okay.
Okay.
Okay, is there a...
So it'd be a motion directing staff to prepare an ordinance approving site plan amendments, landscape amendments, architectural approval, and approval of certain sign variations in accordance with the plans that are presented to you tonight, in accordance with the conditions referenced in your packet. And finally, approval of a certificate of building use conversion allowing an area that comprises 70.2% of the area of the building rather than 80%.
Okay, is there a motion to that extent?
President Protem, if I could. There's one important item I wanted to make sure that the board was apprised of. Mike and I have been working with the larger development of Hawthorne Row. One thing that I want to add is, I think everything that the petitioner has asked, has worked with us on, they've taken care of all of it. We're really pleased as far as where this project's going. One element that came out after the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting is we're working on the intersection northwest of Denny's, and right now, it's, the slopes need to be adjusted. And one of the things that we think are important is trying to work through, as you're heading towards that intersection, so you're west of this site and you're heading towards that major intersection, we want to extend the right turn lane to get people over to the right quicker. Because what we're finding is people are driving to the intersection.
From the south?
From the south, going north.
Going north, and then wanting to turn east.
And they are going to that pork chop, and then they're turning out, taking a right around the pork chop to go to the signal. What we'd like to do is have that right turn lane to take you to the Milwaukee Avenue signal to start earlier. But we couldn't do that because we didn't know who the ownership was, couldn't work through it. And now we have a petitioner in front of us. So in our latest technical review, and we just learned the solution two weeks ago, so it's new for them, too, but there is a easement request at the northwest corner of this site to try to configure an extended right turn lane. So that is something that I wanted to make sure...
We haven't seen the tech. Could you put the site plan up, Mike?
Yeah.
Just, what you're basically saying is up where it says outer ring, you want to take some of that space and turn right, and that is...
So...
That is...
Yeah, so...
So we would have to have a variance for setbacks and things? I think it's on...
We will work through any solution we need to on this. What we're talking about doing is extending this right turn lane earlier to make this intersection safer.
And would you do this before we plant trees there?
We absolutely would. We absolutely would.
So Diane, what Dave is saying is we would like to work with you to ask for a granting of an easement for that, if you're in agreement.
We'll work with you on that, yeah. You know, it only, as long as the people aren't going to, can you give me some distances there? If they stack to block the ingress egress point, where we're putting the sign, the smaller sign, to come in, I mean, I haven't seen any of this, so, you know, we'll work it through.
Understood.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
I think we left off on calling for a motion as stated by Director Atkinson.
Right. So was there a motion to the extent of what?
I'll bring into a motion to prove exactly what Michael had stated.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Horster?
Aye.
Markwart?
Aye.
Eppenheim?
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next item is the Vernon Hills Athletic Complex concessions proposal. Bobo's Euros in Vernon Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Earlier this summer, the village staff was approached by the owner of Bobo's Euros in Vernon Hills with a, with interest in operating the concession stand out at the, out at the V-HAC. As many of you might know, the V-HAC has had a various operating history since it's been in existence. We've had a licensing agreement where we've actually had an operator in there providing concessions for various weekend baseball tournaments and other sporting events. We've also made the area available to local civic groups to use for fundraising events. So this is kind of a unique proposal for the village board, and so what we're looking for this evening is more of a concept discussion and presentation on this. The petitioner is here this evening to share his plan for the potential use of the area. And what we're hoping for is for staff to get some direction and feedback from the committee on what types of terms you might want to be interested in, and more of a general philosophy of, you know, if this is the type of arrangement and service that we want to be providing through the concessions area out at the V-HAC. So Freddie's here this evening from Bobo's and here to answer any questions you might have on what he's intending to do out there. And we can certainly answer any questions at the staff level as well.
Okay. Yeah, if you want to come up, please. Are these events you're talking about, yeah, do you want to give us your name and...
Oh, my name's Freddie.
Okay.
Sir.
Are these, what events in particular are you, I mean, are you talking about high school events or just?
I'm looking at more like baseball games, soccer games, lacrosse games, you know...
Non-high school-related?
Both. Whatever events are carrying, happening at the V-HAC.
Have you considered bringing a, do you have a food truck?
I'm in the process of figuring that out, too.
Because I'm trying to, I think it would almost be more advantageous to bring, if we allow a food truck, like in the parking lot, because really, that concession stand is tiny. Is that what you would be utilizing? Because it's kind of small. There's really not much.
Yeah, I mean, I was looking at just keeping it basic, like hot dogs, pretzels, pizza, stuff like that. You know, something typical where it would be at a baseball game.
Right. But would we consider allowing a food truck, like, in an area of the parking lot?
I think I'll defer to some of our food truck experts on staff, but...
Sure.
My understanding of the food truck permitting here is that we typically only usually allow them in association with a special event permit. So for a food truck to just operate in general in the village, that's currently not allowed by our ordinance.
Well, but in relation to that, what do we already do with concessions? Because I don't want to infringe, I mean, the high school does...
Not much.
Yeah, currently, right now, the building is, in essence, not used. On occasion, it might be used over a weekend for a fundraising effort through a local civic group, but right now, there's no day-to-day operator. I believe our last agreement for the concession stand expired back in 2018.
And to what extent does the high school do their concessions?
I don't think they do any there.
Just football or anything?
I don't think they do any there.
They don't do anything.
It was Martin Peterson that ended up bringing that in with the youth program.
Yeah.
Right, so that's pretty much gone away.
And that's gone away. So the area, it's a smaller area. There's another area, I think we're... There's another area, I think where Ice Machine was or is, and that's where they actually stored, I think, a golf cart. But for the timeframe of what is, it is not being used at all.
It's, it's not a huge space, but it sounds like you're being very minimal in your offerings, which is appropriate.
So I run the concession stand at the pool, at the pool, and I've gained some experience of the situation, and I think I can make it work. It's not, I'm not planning on...
There's plenty of regular events, but there's also, you could benefit a lot from the soccer tournament, the lacrosse tournaments, and the baseball tournaments, I think, as long as you're comfortable with that size of attendance, you know, and staff for those, those peak times.
I mean, obviously, you're going to go there and see, and we talked to, I think, was it Tom, or for the...
The Park District?
Park District, with the scheduling of games and whatnot.
Yeah.
So pull one-on-one together and figure all that.
Yeah.
He's got a point. That's right, with the, with the pinwheel, that is dealt baseball by the Park District. So I don't know if you'd do it that time, too, or through their tournaments.
I might be able to share some history as far as the previous concession agreement. I know Mark Peterson, everyone knows who Mark Peterson is. He used to have the concession agreement. Essentially, when there were different tournaments, he'd bring his grill out, hot dogs, hamburgers, and the like. And I, I think what Freddie's proposing to do is to, you know, take over that. He's heard a lot of input from some of his customers at, at Bobo's that there is no food service right now. So I, I think his proposal is to act much like what Mark Peterson has in the, in the past. The previous concession agreement also had an element that if there are some other fundraisers and that, that they would contact the concessionaire and work something out to allow them to have some fundraisers, too. Because a lot of the tournaments out there, they're also trying to, you know, gain some money for their, their programs. So the concession agreement would be with, with Freddie and Bobo's, and then there would be the opportunity to work with some of the, the tournament sponsors for that, too. But I, I think that's what Freddie's proposing.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with that.
Counsel, what, do we have any...
Well, we'd have to work through terms.
Yeah, what kind of an agreement and what kind of...
Yeah, similar to the last agreement, the agreement would have term, insurance requirements, indemnification requirements, things of that nature, and then fees, you know, what, what are the fees that you charge for someone to run the stand, you know, that'd be up to you. So I think what staff's looking for is a motion to direct staff to start to negotiate an agreement to bring back for your consideration, probably at another committee of the whole meeting, I would think, just so we could have an open discussion and go from there. But looking at the last agreement, that was from 2015, I, I was just going through it again, I think we could, we could be drafting an agreement pretty similar to that. Some of the terms I mentioned are, are going to be the, the main, main points.
We had talked in concept on a trial basis to allow an agreement to facilitate the fall 2022 season and the spring 2023 season, and then this is something we could revisit next summer after the operators had a, two seasons to go through to see how it's working for, for both parties.
So you would probably bring a, a, an early rendition of it back to the September 6th meeting, because that's our next...
Yeah, I think what we could do, we could do the committee of the whole, or we could put this on unfinished business on the village board agenda and have a discussion there. It's up to the board on, on pace, because I know that we've got the September 6th and then September 20th, so that would be, if we had another committee of the whole, the earliest for final approval would be on September 20th, which at that point, we're almost halfway through the, the fall season.
So couldn't, couldn't we do some in the interim, like you were saying? I mean, instead of waiting all this time?
Instead of waiting till the next, the next meet?
Yeah.
Well, the September meeting is two weeks from now. We could, do you need something?
I don't know.
Before then? Then we could, but...
I don't know, when do you want to start?
As soon as possible.
I'd prefer to have an agreement in place that you approve. Insurance certificates, naming the village as an additional insured, maintenance responsibilities. I think we've got to lay a bunch out, but we do have a good starting point with the last agreement.
Well, that's what I mean. I figured we had a template.
And some history also is the village wasn't really looking, there wasn't a large dollar amount that the village was looking for income. I think it was more based on servicing people that are going to the V-HAC.
Yeah, we don't need to charge ridiculous fees, especially if someone's willing to do it. That's how I look at it. If someone's willing to do it, let them do it.
So let's have staff bring it back for unfinished business.
Two weeks.
In, well, three, it'd be three weeks.
Okay. Next meeting.
Yeah. All right, we'll do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Nothing else on committee, correct?